Organized, organized.
Good evening. Call this meeting in order, please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is in flag. Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. All right. May I get a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held on January 8th, please?
So moved.
Second. All right, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, we've got one person wishing to address the board on a non-agenda item. Come up and tell us your name, your address, and you have five minutes.
Well, y'all know my name. It's Mary Shield-Byce. I live at 7625 West Virginia. I have a request tonight. Last meeting, two weeks ago, and in prior meetings for the years I've been coming here and watching live online, you said I wasn't here, but I was watching, you often refer to, this was discussed during a work session. The work sessions happen at 3:00. Five days out of six, I'm picking up grandchildren from school at 2:50. I'm asking tonight that the board make a decision to put the work sessions online and on K-learn in the interest of transparency and openness, so that we don't just come to the meeting and find out as was discussed during the work session, the Donovan Group will be, or whatever the situation is, and I mean no offense, I'm just, that was two weeks ago. So if you could just, just in the interest for those of us who want to know, but there's really no way to find out once the meeting is done unless we are here physically present in the building, and I thank you for considering this request.
Thank you. All right, can I get an approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. All right, good news report. Deanne.
Good evening. We have a team report tonight to bring you the latest collaboration between the Sioux Falls Police Department and the Sioux Falls School District. We believe that our partnership has, is as strong as it's ever been in, with the Sioux Falls Police Department. We're very lucky to have the school resource officers in our buildings building positive relationships with our students. So we asked for their help on a collaborative effort that we wanted to launch with the prevention of distracted driving. As many of you know, South Dakota is one of only a handful of states that allows students the age of 14 to get behind the wheel, and of course, that's because of our agricultural nature in South Dakota and the requirements of the farming community. A lot of times people think age is a factor in considering someone's safety as a driver. Certainly, it might be, but really, when you get down to it, it's their experience level, and also the attention that they pay when they are behind the wheel. And we know that adults can make decisions that are not good decisions when they are behind the wheel as well. So we created a public service campaign about distracted driving that we're really focusing to our teen drivers, but we believe it's a message that can resonate with every driver, no matter the age, whether they're grabbing something from the backseat, zoning out while they're listening to music, maybe checking a text from someone that is communicating with them. We can all make those decisions, and they're poor decisions, and it doesn't matter what age you are. In fact, in 2015, the National Highway Transportation Safety Administration says that 3,777 deaths in the U.S. were caused by distracted driving, so we do know it crosses all age boundaries. We have an opportunity through community education to educate 750 students each year in our driver's education program. So we created, in partnership, a five-and-a-half-minute video, some shorter public service announcements, some billboards, and some print materials that will all be required viewing for our 750 students going through driver's education, and we hope that our community will take a moment to learn from those public service announcements as well. So we'll play a couple of the shorter versions for you now, and then also share a few more things after they're over.
Hello, Lincoln High School.
Hey, Edison Cats.
Hi, McGovern Eagles.
Hey, Woodyer Middle School.
Hi, Roosevelt High School. I'm Officer John Gannon, the school resource officer. Today, I'd like to talk to you about distracted driving.
What is distracted driving?
Maybe it's talking to friends that are in the car with you, taking your eyes off the roadway even for a second can impact your reaction time.
Want to tell you about a call I was dispatched to.
The mere seconds that he turned down to look at his phone caused him to come off the road and strike a telephone pole, which did take his life.
He rolled the truck, ejected his friend, and I got to be there, holding her head as she cried through a mouth of broken teeth. It's one of those things that you don't forget.
It's a scene that I'll never forget.
Shut the phone off while you're driving, answer those calls when you stop.
We don't want to tell parents what has happened to their child because of one mistake.
So please.
Please.
Please, put down the phones, stay alert, and stay alive.
And another similar version.
Hey, Washington High School. I'm Officer Runyon.
Hello, Patrick Henry Panthers.
Hello, Memorial Mustangs.
Hi, New Tech Titans.
I'd like to talk to you today about distracted driving.
What is distracted driving?
Snapchat, Twitter, Instagram, Facebook.
What about grabbing something out of your bookbag?
I was one of the first officers on scene. The damage to her body was extensive.
It's a scene that I'll never forget. Looking at a car that was mangled, twisted, wrapped around a telephone pole, and there was the driver sitting in the driver's seat, just sitting there, lifeless, and sitting on the floor with his phone.
Taking your eyes off the roadway even for a second can impact your reaction time.
It's not worth that split second.
Please, 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 put down the phones, and don't drive distracted.
Of course, as I said, we hope that those impact the lives of our teen drivers, and that's why at the beginning of the public service announcements, we called out school names, trying to get the attention of our teens and let them know we're talking directly to them. But of course, we're also talking to parents as well. I'll introduce Sergeant Jason Leach, who was a big part of getting this project off the ground. We asked for help, and they said yes immediately, so.
Thank you, Deanne. And like Deanne said, my name's Jason Leach. I'm the supervisor, one of the two supervisors for the school resource officers that provide service to the entire city of Sioux Falls. So when Deanne contacted us about being interested in doing a campaign like this, we were onboarded immediately. We jumped in. I had officers come volunteer their time into the evening to shoot this video, and it's important for us to get that message out there. We see it on a daily basis. The high school SROs see it in the parking lots. The elementary, the officers that are at this elementary, middle school see it from parents. They see it from passersby's going through the school zones. We see it when we do our school zone enforcement at the beginning of the year and the end of the year, and throughout the year. We see people on their phones distracted, and it's not just in the school zones, it's all over. So the important part of this is the campaign, as you can see, the billboard's coming up here. Done a great job getting the public service announcement out there, not just to our driver's ed students that we have kind of a captive audience for, 750 students there, to show them that five-and-a-half-minute video where the officers are able to go a little more in depth and tell a little bit more of a personal story, and I think that's just the impactful part of it, and brings real life into it for the students, and really hits home with them and drives that point to them that this is important, and we need you to take the stance as students, drivers, and driver's learning, come out on the street, take that stance, put down the phone, put down the distractions, but then also, you know, we want the parents to take that as well, and be that example, set that example for their teen drivers that are going out there, so they can lead by example, and we don't hopefully add to those number of deaths that are on there for distracted driving.
So we had great collaboration from the police department. We also, Eastgate Towing, we just simply asked if we could have a mangled car to use in our background, and they had no problem picking one up and delivering it to us. I didn't know it was that easy to get a mangled car delivered, but it was simple, as simple as a phone call. And then Jeff Riders, guys out at Operational Services cleared out their area where they keep all their trucks and Sanders and such, and provided us a good space. So there was a lot of collaboration, and it went together rather quickly, and as you know, Ben Schumacher is our video extraordinaire who made it all look so great. So we launched this at police briefing this morning, again, having the attention of the media there, and so we hope it continues to get a lot of views and traction in our community.
Any questions?
I saw it posted on Facebook earlier today, and I thought it was very powerful and impactful, so I certainly appreciate all of your work and your colleagues as well putting that together, and obviously Ben and Deanne and Jeff and everybody else that was involved. It's a great production, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. You know, one of the things that I'd just like to bring out is, this is another example of the relationship we have with our school resource officers, and sometimes I think people forget, when we say SROs or school resource officers, we're talking about the Sioux Falls Police Department, and the relationship we have as a school district with the police department, I think is nothing short of phenomenal. When I first came here, we had Lon Hatcher and David Osterquist in the positions that we dealt so closely with, and after a while, we found out we were going to lose both of them, and I thought, oh my goodness, this isn't good. And they were replaced with Adam Peterson and Jason Leach. And just last week, I had a conversation with Assistant Superintendent Jamie Knoll about the effectiveness of the program, and it hasn't skipped a beat. I was telling Jason that, Officer Leach, that earlier today. And so we really appreciate everything that you do, but this program is another example of, you don't just stand in the hallways and wait for kids to mess up. There are so many proactive things that happen as a result of the SROs being in our building. Like, I can't tell you, as the superintendent of schools, how much I appreciate the police department in general, but the SROs that serve our schools specifically, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Deanne. All right, any conflicts, conflicts of interest to report on tonight? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Can I get an approval, please?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, can I get a motion to approve the supplemental consent agenda, claims to Sanford Health, please?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. All right, that motion passes with two abstentions from Board Member Ryder and Board Member Mickelson. And then Items 9B, claims to Avera, please. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, that motion passes with an abstention from myself. Right, moving on to the reports of the superintendent.
Our first report tonight is an introduction of the Donovan Group, who we hired at the last board meeting. I would ask Director of Research, Innovation, and Accountability, Mr. Morrison, to do the introduction.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, it's my privilege to kind of kick this off tonight. As you're aware, one of the pillars of our strategic plan is community engagement, and we take that very serious. And so as we enter discussions about growing enrollment and what that means to the district, it's very important that we get, you know, community engagement throughout, you know, over the next many months. And so we know, as important as, we need to bring in some expertise to help us do that, somebody who's been through this process before, so that we make sure we get to everybody and collect all the input that we need, and properly go through all the things we need to put, you know, for transparency and lead us through that process. And so as you are aware, we had a very robust RFP process, and from that list of RFP submissions, we narrowed that down, and we went through a further interview process. And so eventually, we landed with the Donovan Group. And so I'm pleased tonight to have Joe Donovan with us, the founder of the Donovan Group. And Joe, I'll ask you to come up here, and after spending today with Joe and giving him the whirlwind tour and educating him on everything, although he had done a fair amount of research before he even got here, but I'm more convinced than ever that we have the right man for the job and the right firm. And so it's been great to get to know you today, and I don't know if you want to say anything to the board, but this is Mr. Joe Donovan.
Thank you. Well, thanks for that introduction, and thanks for the opportunity to be with you and to work with you. It was a really terrific RFQ process, and I had a great day learning about your school district, all of the great things that are underway, and how we can continue to work, building on your strategic plan, bringing people together around their shared values for their schools. So my head is spinning with all that I learned today. The next step for me will be to go back to my office and put together a really robust plan based on some, what I saw, come back to administration, and again, talk about how we can take the next steps. But I'm just so very grateful for the opportunity to work with you. It's a terrific school district, and again, just very grateful.
I might add a little something here. I guess a couple of things today. Number one, I've told a number of people that Mr. Donovan would be with us today, and we were going to give him a drink through a fire hose, and I think we accomplished that. But really, three things came to mind today as I reflect on our time together, and one was homework, two was humility, and three was hard work. And let me just explain a little bit about what I mean by each of those. I was impressed when we met this morning that we were trying to provide a lot of information, but what I found was a whole lot of homework had been done prior to our meeting, so that was very, very impressive when we started. And the second thing was humility. I found out that, at least my perception today is, we didn't hire a know-it-all. We hired somebody with great humility who's going to try to come in and listen to us and listen to the community, and figure out what the community needs to do, and not somebody that's going to tell the community what needs to be done. So that humility was very much appreciated. And then the third thing was the hard work, the hard work that I've seen in doing reference checks and looking at backgrounds, but also the hard work that I know just started today. And so we look forward to your report telling us what's next and what the next steps are, and essentially giving us our marching orders. So it was a, while we have a long way to go, we took the first step today, and I think it was a very productive first step.
Well, thank you. I'm glad the blizzard, or potential blizzard, didn't keep you away.
Not at all.
And, you know, heard you got a good sort of overview of our community and what we do here, and just look forward to working with you in the future, and just thanks for coming out.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Appreciate it.
Our second report is, is it?
Do you need a, any, is that just an introduction?
I think that's just an introduction. The second, the second report of the superintendent also comes from Mr. Morrison tonight. It'd be an update on our strategic plan. You've heard our strategic plan referenced a few times already tonight. You will a few times going forward tonight, and hopefully you, hopefully you do at every board meeting. We put a lot of time and energy and resources into the development of the strategic plan. I think we're just beginning to see the fruits of that endeavor, so we'll keep you updated, and tonight's no exception. So, Mr. Morrison?
Thank you. Well, as you're aware, in the fall of 2015, we started our strategic plan process in about February of, about this time last year almost, we kind of wrapped it up with our goals that we were going to try to achieve. And so really, this is just about the first year benchmark where we can start to see what's happened as far as some of the indicators that we did have laid out there that were benchmarked to last year. And really, I think, again, the purpose of this report is to give you a brief overview of all the things that are going on in the district to try to achieve that plan. There's a lot going on, and hopefully, this report will give you a sense of the many things that are going on to achieve those goals. So we had benchmarked quite a few things to the 16, 17 school year that we were able to, and so I'm going to run through some high-level indicators of, some things that we've been able to move, and some things that we haven't been able to move yet. But you can see the first indicator up there, the four-year graduation rate increased over 3% from 80.55 to 83.85, which is significant. So we're very proud of that indicator. At the same time, the high school completion rate also increased, which is again, another indicator that's moving in the right direction. Something we're very proud of, if you look at all the cohort rates within there, all the different subgroups that we track, they all increased. So it wasn't just one subgroup increasing, leaving others behind. They all made progress, and so I think that's significant for our district. And then the next one is, you can see the difference between the kids on free and reduced lunch versus those who do not have those economic disadvantages. We decreased that gap by almost 6 percentage points, which is very significant. If you look at the rigor on some of our other indicators that we have going on out there, you look at the number of students scoring three or higher on AP exams, we increased that a percent from 70.6 to 71.6. Percent of graduates scoring 24% or higher on EACT increased from 46.1 to 47.1%. Very significant. And then finally, something we really should all be proud of is our eighth grade math scores. We increased those by over 2%, and we outpaced the state by over 7% of those at the eighth grade level. That's significant, and really a tribute to our math programs all the way through the district, getting us to this eighth grade point. Two indicators that we are trying very hard to move, that we haven't shown as much progress as we'd like to at this point, would be the attendance, and we talked about that before, and I think as we walk through some of the initiatives, you know, you'll see that we're, we've got some new initiatives against attendance, working very hard on that, and something we hope to move this next school year. We've got a significant amount of kids, as you're aware, that are within one or two days of making that benchmark, and so we continue to work diligently on that. The other thing that, you know, continues to lag a little bit is our third grade reading scores, and I think as Dr. Boyson comes up and talks, you'll see the significant amount of work that's going into moving those third grade reading scores, and something that we're working hard. So I think overall, great progress against our schools, against our goals that we set for us. After this school year, we'll be able to benchmark another set of indicators out there that were benchmarked off of last school year, but significant progress to date. And so we're going to kind of tag-team this, the next priority areas, but Dr. Boyson is going to come up and walk you through some of the strategies that we have ongoing under the Priority Area 1, which is a student outcomes category.
Good evening. How are you? Student outcomes, Priority Area 1, falls under my watch, and so we'll talk about the different initiatives that we are doing and the progress that we're making towards those goals. So the first one is monitoring students that are at risk for not graduating, and each high school has a team that meets weekly to look at students at risk for not graduating, and they assign a teacher to monitor that student, meet with that student, and move forward with those goals on each student. And as you can see, they started that in a few of the buildings last year. We moved the needle, and so looking forward to seeing how that growth comes again this year. Struggling readers, currently, we're doing an academic return on investment study to examine the literacy and action model. Partial study was completed last year, and we continued on with that study, and we are looking at those results, and we will have a report for you in February on how the students are doing within that program. The summer climb pilot, this coming summer will be the third year of that summer climb pilot, so we've, they're looking at getting applications out there and getting people hired and ready to go for that. Data-driven decision-making, we implemented the math assessment in K through sixth grade this current school year, and we're looking to expand that into seventh and eighth grade through the budgeting process coming up here in the next month and a half. The elevation tool is being used at all ELL center sites, and the staff really appreciate the data that they get and the decisions they can use based on the data that the elevation tool has to give them, where their students are at, and what they need to do to move them forward. And so that has been a good tool for the students, the teachers, and the parents. Next one is multiple pathways for students. Code to the Future, again, added into three elementaries for this current year, and they are just coming up to their next showcase, so the second cycle. It's been a great rollout for those students and the buildings, and we're looking at moving that into the, or we are moving that into the two middle schools, into Woodyer and George McGovern next year. And so they feed, those elementaries feed those middle schools, and so it's a great computer pathway, and that goes right into the next one, SD Pass, a partnership with DSU Sioux Falls School District and Southeast Tech, and that's the computer networking, cybersecurity, and software development. That, it streamlines the process. We start in elementary with Code to the Future. We get into middle school next year with, again, Code to the Future, develops that computer science immersion pathway into the high school. Students can take software development, cybersecurity, and they can earn stackable certificates. So they can take those certificates, go right out into the workforce, or apply them to STI or DSU for credit, and gets them into the workforce, or reduces the amount of classes they have to take. Next one is a student internship program, and we developed that to start today. Today was a rollout. And we were lucky enough to get four career advisors from the State Department of Labor, and the city grant added an additional one. Those career advisors work in the high schools. One's been assigned to each high school, and they work on teaching soft skills through Bring Your A Game, and then aligning internship opportunities for those students out in the community, and they can waive one graduate, or up to two graduates. And they can waive one graduate or up to two graduate credits for that. They're also looking at setting up job shadow experiences for students. And we have 17 students at Roosevelt signed up, 27 at Washington. We have six at Lincoln and two at New Tech High. And so that was as of Friday. And so very excited for those career advisors to be in the building. They worked alongside the counselors and with the administration too and just getting them out into the workforce as soon as possible, those students. The next one is a gifted education program review and looking at different opportunities and how we identify students in the gifted program. And that is going through a study and there is a board report coming up February 12th for you. So you'll hear how that process is going. And the Spanish immersion is currently in the 10th year of the program. Those students are ninth graders over at Lincoln High School and we've engaged with ACTFO, the American Council of Teaching of Foreign Languages, to conduct a program review. They were in the district two weeks ago, talking to parents, teachers, students, collecting information from us. They're putting all that together and then they will come back at the end of February with their report. Any questions on priority one? All right, Doug Mylenberg.
Good evening. Priority area two addresses our school's climate and culture. And just as Dr. Boyson explained, priority two has had many people across the district working vigorously to make improvements. The district's attendance council has formed and has met twice this year and will meet two more times as we look at district level priorities and initiatives around attendance. All of our protocols related to truancy and attendance were updated to match the changes made in the Juvenile Justice Act that went into effect July 1st. We also have implemented the Kinvolv app, which we had people here to share that information with you. So there are five pilot schools. The technology bugs were all worked out and now that's being actively used. Doug and I have seen some preliminary data on January and there were thousands of calls going or texts going out to parents through it. So that's off and running and has been embraced in our schools. The Tier Two program for elementary youth was expanded this fall to include Laura Wilder Elementary. Staff were hired. They had a number of trainings they went to in preparation for the school year to start. So that's off and running and being implemented at this point. The impact of our elementary Tier Two program will be evaluated over this semester and a report brought to you in June. The seven principals and Mr. Morrison and I have met to start to lay out what that evaluation should include so that we're sure it's comprehensive and brings you a good overview of what's going on there. Mr. Knoll and I have been in discussion with many Haha County officials, with law enforcement and court officials to work toward a memorandum of agreement in implementing the Juvenile Justice Act as it relates to students who create or get themselves into different offenses and how we can work together toward that. So those conversations started this summer. And four Sioux Falls School District building leadership teams have attended a 16-hour course that was designed and led by the University of South Dakota to help us begin to learn more and expand our thinking as it relates to culturally responsive pedagogy. So that went on this semester and we'll bring you a report in February about what that looks like and what kind of a plan we see going forward for our schools. The Sioux Falls School District Success Coordinator Program is an extension of our counseling program. Mr. Knoll has laid out an evaluation plan for that that we'll bring you information about this summer also. And we've incorporated safety practices for our staff who move around the district, both between schools and some of which go into homes to serve students where that's required. Those procedures were rolled out before school started in, in August and tools put in place where staff can feel more confident in their ways to notify people if there would be a compromising situation. In addition, we've purchased some software that's available on mobile devices and softwares that will alert staff who are moving between buildings in our schools if a school should have to lock down for something so staff aren't moving into dangerous situations. So those have all been implemented and put in place. And I believe Mr. Morrison is going to be Mr. Knoll for priority three.
Yes, Mr. Knoll couldn't be here tonight, but wanted to cover some of the things that are going on under the staff priority area three. Many of these you're familiar with. The teacher internship program, just saw a report on, I believe, last school board meeting. So that's up and going. The teacher pathway program, working on the curriculum for that and also trying to get some dual credit options with the local universities. The teacher evaluation process was revised in the spring of 2017. And something very exciting is we just completed the Gallup engagement survey and we achieved a 94% participation rate, which I think any company or what Gallup would tell you is that's at the very high end of results. So we're very excited about that and, and Jamie did a great job of shepherding us through that and letting everyone knew where they were from a participation standpoint because input from the staff does matter to us. And so it's going to be exciting to see the results from that this year. Some other things, implementation of the K through 12 elementary instruction day study underway and will be reviewed and reported out to you. Building Technology Integration Team leaders also will be reviewed and reported to you. And then the state-run mentoring program also in the process of being reviewed. So lots going on under the staff pillar, but something that's very important to us.
And I am here to report on community engagement, priority area four. And while I increased the size of the other fonts, I apparently missed this, this slide here. I apologize for that. I'll summarize for you what that says. As you've heard a number of times this evening, community engagement is very important to us and gathering the feedback from our stakeholders is something that we very much value and look forward to carrying out and continuing. On an annual basis, we do hold focus groups with teachers, classified staff and parents to get some specific feedback on the strategic plan or those things that we're working on specifically. So attendance, behavior, graduation rates with, with our staff, as you heard from the Gallup poll, just the general working environment. We also have some surveys going on regarding the professional development that our staff receives. As a result of our Gallup results last year, we surveyed our education assistants in August to find out what they needed to be more productive in their roles as education assistants. And then that professional development will be delivered to them through in services. Our high schools are doing some surveying as well for the accreditation process. That's a required survey that we go out and seek the feedback of parents. So we are surveying stakeholders in a variety of ways on a variety of topics. We're also engaging the community about the enrollment concerns that we have, the increased enrollment, which is a great concern, but then the need for those future facilities. And you heard from Mr. Donovan tonight, who will lead us in, in those discussions in the future. And then also trying to do a better job with our staff and finding out what kind of tools they need to have at their fingertips so that they can understand a little bit more what's happening at school board meetings. After each school board meeting, I send out an e-newsletter to all staff with direct links to the reports that were given. I also communicate with them via email and share some information on a regular basis throughout the month. And then in August of this past year, we created a video to help new staff members navigate the website and other resources. So we provided a video that said, if you're looking for calendar information, go to this tab, go here, find it here. If you are looking for benefit information, this is where you find that. And here's some important information you need to know. Here's another link to, to get you to that spot. So that video has been viewed 157 times as the writing of the writing of this report and we send that link out to all new staff when they're hired. So they have a ability to have that information at their fingertips at a time, on a timeframe that's convenient for them. So I will turn it back over to Doug for a summary.
Thank you. So I think you can see there's a lot going on, but I think it's the right stuff going on. As you can see, we're moving the needle on lots of indicators, which is exciting. So we'll keep reporting back periodically to you guys and the community about how we're doing against the strategic plan. And then as we come up with new strategies and things of that nature, we'll be reporting to those to you as well. So I'll stand by for any questions.
Any questions for Doug?
I have a question, just a comment. I think it's easy when we come to meetings and we get two or three reports, you know, in the 45 minutes that we sit here to think, well, we're really, really doing a lot of stuff. But when you hear a comprehensive reports of all of the things that are going on, realize how many balls are really being juggled and how many different people are really having such a huge impact on not just our students, not just our teachers, but all of our staff members and our community as a whole. So kudos to everybody that presented tonight, but even all the people who are working so hard behind the scenes and whose maybe name wasn't on a slide, but has spent a lot of time and energy and effort in making this plan really be a living, breathing document and not just something that, like we said, we don't want to put it on a shelf and not reference it again. But when you think about the many, many things in each of these four areas that are going on from every level, from preschool up to high school and preparing people for after high school, it's just amazing to think about all of the wheels that are going at the same time. So thank you for kind of that big picture look. We sometimes we get just that finite when we look at the agenda items, but I think this is a really nice, comprehensive look at what's going on. So thank you for that.
You know, we've all been on committees and there's strategic plans, but it's fun to be a part of a strategic plan and see not only the movement, but the progression that we're making. So thanks for that. Thanks, everybody, for all their work.
All right. Can I get a motion and a second to approve this strategic plan update, please? So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. All right. Next.
Good evening. I'll switch sides of the table here for the next report. The next report is concerning a land donation. As, as you know, we've been discussing and accomplishing several measures in our strategic plan, in fact, just seconds ago. We've worked at those initiatives for quite some time now. And one of the initiatives that you just saw was Deanna presenting on strategic plan priority area number four regarding community engagement. Specifically, within that priority area, we're looking at putting together a facilities plan with substantial input from our community, much the same way that we developed the strategic plan itself. Well, I've got a little bit of news on that specific topic. Sometime, I think it was back in November, I would have to go check my calendar for sure, but I got a call from Sanford regarding that very process, the process of facilities planning. And so I met with Kevin Lampy and then I met with Mr. Lampy a couple of times to talk about the vision that we had as a school district for that community involvement and what that might look like. Mr. Lampy then talked to me about Sanford having land for our consideration if we thought it would be helpful in that solution-seeking process. Mr. Lampy then told me that the land that he was talking about would be a gift. So I'm pleased to put in front of you tonight an option for you to consider a land donation from Sanford for up to 35 acres. In addition, the district would have an option to purchase 10 additional acres of land from Sanford. Here are the highlights of that, of that potential agreement. One, Sanford would agree to donate up to 35 acres of land for construction, an operation of an elementary school, a middle school or a high school, or any combination of elementary and middle school potentially that could go on that land. The location of the land is in the northern part of Sioux Falls. Put on your Sioux Falls geography here. It's south of Benson Road, east of Interstate 29. The land is located southwest of the Sanford Sports Complex and it's located along Westport. Give you a little bit of an idea there. The school district, as I've already mentioned, has an option to buy an additional 10 acres of land. And I think that's critical. If you think through the, the parcels of land where our elementary schools, our middle schools and our high schools sit, Roosevelt High School and Washington High School sit on 40 and 44 acres of land. Lincoln's parcel is quite a bit smaller, but I wouldn't ask you to put another high school on the parcel of land the size of Lincoln going forward. So we have enough land there potentially for a high school if that would be what the community would decide. Also think about our middle school parcels. Those are about 20 acres and our elementaries are about 15 acres. Those are rough numbers, by the way. So we would have more than enough land to build a middle school if we so desired and more than enough to build an elementary school. But one of the things that we did years ago when, prior to building McGovern, is we purchased enough land to build a middle school and an elementary school if that would be the way to go. This would allow us to replicate that again, if that would be the way we go. One of the things that I think is a real plus in considering this donation is we, we weren't told how we had to use the land. We were only told that we need to have a school on that land. So I think that's a critical point. The, the school district can discuss the possibility of using this site in the community engagement sessions that will happen soon here with regard to the future of facilities in our school district. The land donation would go back to Sanford if it's not deemed important for us through the future of public school development or if we couldn't pass a bond referendum to actually build those facilities. Finally, I would say that I truly appreciate the Sanford gift and their partnership in this prospect, partnership in this issue with the school district. We have a couple of people here from Sanford tonight. I know we have with us Matt Ditmanson. Matt is the director of business development or aid director of business development with Sanford. I know we also have Paul Hanson here, who's an executive vice president with Sanford. I think we have another person from Sanford here as well. I'm just not sure who it is or I would introduce that person as well. But I'll turn to the, to the Sanford contingency and ask them if they would consider coming forward and, and giving their view on this topic.
Hi, I'm Paul Hanson he was referencing earlier. I would, first of all, say thank you so much for volunteering your time and services to the school board. It is sometimes a thankless job and as I look around, as I listen to the reports tonight, as I listen to the strategies in progress, we have something very, very proud, you know, we have something to be very, very proud of in this community. And as a new person to the community within the last four years, I can tell you that I am just truly amazed and we are truly blessed with the resources that we have. Now, having said that, I will also say that on behalf of Sanford Health, making this particular donation or this offer of donation to the school system, you know, we are very, very pleased to do that, honored to do that. We've made investments in large universities, we've made investments in other, other school opportunities. We've made investments in large universities, we've made investments in other school opportunities, and we do look at it as an investment because we look at the workforce in the future, we look at what our school systems can do, you know, for our children, for the young men and women that they produce. And so with that understanding, we humbly, you know, come before you, and we hope that this act of community engagement, if you will, will be taken seriously, and we can act on this, and we can both win together, the community, the school system, and Sanford Health. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would stand by for any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Maher? I mean, I'll just say, thank you. I mean, it's a tremendous offer and gift. You know, we are, as you said, very blessed in our community to have the partnerships that we have. We spoke earlier about our SROs. I think we also have great partnerships with our business community here as well. And so I just want to thank you, all three of you, for being here tonight. And we'll proceed.
Well, I would like to begin the process to make this official and move to accept the donation from Sanford of 35 acres of land south of Benson Road and east of I-29 near the Sanford Sports Complex, and authorizing, excuse me, the business manager and the president of the school board to execute for and on behalf of the school district any and all documents necessary to expedite the transfer of the real property from Sanford to the Sioux Falls School District.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Well, I just would like to thank Sanford for their continuing partnership with the school district. As a member of the school board for the public schools, to me, there's nothing more important than the base that the public schools give to every child that comes to our door. And Sanford and all of our other business partners in Sioux Falls understand how critical the public schools are to the success of any community and especially to ours. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I have the honor of being the president of the Associated School Board of South Dakota. That gives me the opportunity to travel throughout the country. And thank you, Sanford, because we don't realize just how lucky we are. There are plenty of states that go without, there are plenty of states that are struggling, and it's with help and generous donations like this that really make us what we are. So thank you.
All right. Seeing nothing further, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right. That is accepted with two abstentions from Board Member Ryder and Board Member Mittelson. Moving on.
Okay. Our next report tonight is a legislative report. Brought to us by Business Manager, Mr. Veeke.
Thank you, Dr. Maher.
We do have one person wishing, one person wishing to address on this topic. Do you want to do it before or after?
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead, Todd. Sorry.
Okay. If we just go through these fairly quickly, if you're okay with it, President Parker, then if you have a question or want to change the, change the position possibly, you can just stop me. Otherwise, I'll just keep going until I hear somebody chime in. First two bills are House bills, 1055 and 1056. They are on behalf of the Bureau of Finance and Management. They will freeze the per student allocation for next year at the FY '18 level and undo the color Gabriel adjustment on the property tax valuations. You know, according to my calculations, which are usually pretty close, the index factor should be 1.69 percent. So instead, it'd be at 0 percent on both of these, and I'll just take them together. We're recommending opposing the bill. The state's general fund budget is increasing. The governor, in his budget address, said they didn't have the money to fund school district increases. But, you know, if that's the case, I guess so be it. But there's two sides to the state aid formula. There's a state aid, and there's property taxes. And state aid is roughly 58 percent of it, property taxes are roughly 42 percent of it. The state can't come up with its share, I guess, okay, you know, maybe we maybe understand that. But why didn't the, why wouldn't the property tax side fund its share? You know, 42 percent of 1.69 is 0.71. There was kind of a lot of to-do last year about coming up with the 0.3 percent. You could come up with the 0.71 percent, and it wouldn't cost the state a dime. So at least do that. We'd like to get the full amount, the full 1.69. But at least we would like the state to look at 0.7, the 0.71, the property tax side. That's those two bills. Next, on the next page, House Bill 1099 is an act to revise certain provisions regarding dual accreditation credit. It would remove language that the state or school may pay all or part of the tuition. Students must have the course route approved by the school district prior to enrolling. Section 2 speaks to the regulations put on post-secondary institutions regarding costs associated with dual credit. We're recommending supporting the bill. Dual credit opportunities allow students that opportunity to earn college credit at a reduced cost and increase the likelihood that they will continue their post-secondary career. House Bill 1100 is an act to require a name be printed on public contracts. We take no position on that bill, but it would affect us, as we would have to put a name on there as well. House Senate, so you can read who signed the contract. Senate Bill 36 amends the provisions within, amends provisions within the South Dakota retirement system. Not very consequential. We would suggest no position, but we'll just track it just in case it gets amended. Senate Bill 37 would revise the automatic enrollment, enrollment provisions of the deferred compensation plan of the South Dakota retirement system. It does not require non-automatic enrollment entities to become auto-enrolled. We're not, we don't auto-enroll our employees. So we suggest no position on it, as it wouldn't affect us. Senate Bill 46 would require all school districts to adopt a policy on the use of restraint and seclusion. It would require immediate notification of parent guardian, a prohibition, a prohibition of prone restraint, a prohibition of involuntary confinement, and training on crisis prevention and proper use of restraint, seclusion. The district would recommend amending the bill. We have a comprehensive policy and training program on crisis prevention and use of restraint, seclusion. The policy would need to be revised to include the specific prohibitions. However, it is not anticipated that our training and practices, practices would require any significant changes. Our two amendments would just be for clarification. We'd actually consider them friendly, and I think the department who wrote this bill and does too. It would, first, would have the school board of each school district shall adopt or revise a school district policy on the use of restraint and seclusion, and we'd add by school district employees. And then, secondly, the procedure for immediately notifying the parent, parents, it's a little, well, it might be unambiguous, it's a little faster to say by the end of the day.
They should be notified.
So we're working with the department to try to get that amended. Next page, Senate Bill 66. It would require school districts to post in their minutes the number of eligible voters residing in the school district at the time of election, the number of eligible voters residing in the school district who voted in the election, the percent of eligible voters who voted, and if the election was held in conjunction with a regular municipal election as provided in 1370.1 or with the regular June provided, or if no election be held, we take no position. No big deal. We put a lot of stuff in our minutes, and this, this would be a good.
Can you just tell me what the point of this is?
Uh, no.
I mean, I, and I, it just seems ridiculous, but...
Yeah, I guess it's just to get more information out about the election. It's not anything that anybody is hiding. It's stuff we present to you. We just don't necessarily put it in our minutes like we could. It'll probably cost us a couple of lines, maybe 12 bucks each time, or something like that. But it isn't that big a deal, and I guess it's good information to know. The one thing I'd wonder, but not push, is does the state provide this information too? It'd be nice if they did.
Yeah, I mean, what's good for the school district should be good for every election held everywhere. Why, why single school boards out?
Agreed. Do you want us to, do you have a position you'd like us to say?
No, I'm just asking questions.
Okay.
Well, it may be making statements.
Do we know it's not already provided on the Secretary of State's website?
Do we what?
Do we know it's not already provided? No, not school district, but the state elections.
Don't know?
Yeah.
That's information that might be nice to have.
Counties, yes, others, no. According to Bev, the master of elections.
But it's on their website, not in their minutes.
Yeah.
Correct. Right.
Just seems a little bit singling out school districts, but that's fine. We can discuss.
We have no position. Maybe we'll, if you guys want to change it, let us know later. We'll see how the bill goes, see if it gets amended.
Okay.
And keep you up to date. Senate Bill 83 allows patriotic societies, defined as a youth membership group or organization listed in Title 36 of the United States Code, to speak to students at each public school one day at the beginning of each school year. The patriotic society would provide notice to the principal on intent to speak, and the principal shall then allow the patriotic society to speak to students during school hours, inform them about the civic involvement of the society, and explain how students may participate or join.
Sorry, which one is that?
Senate Bill 83.
Okay. It's not in our...
Oh, it's not.
We don't have it.
That one, 1099 wasn't...
I got one that's a little more up today. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Our recommended position is to oppose the bill, determination of outside organization access to students as best determined by each individual school board.
I'm okay with that position.
Okay. Do you guys have Senate Bill 84?
Nope.
We go 66 to 86.
Do you want, you want to do 84 verbally, or do you want to do it next time?
We can do it verbally.
Verbal, okay. Sorry. Yeah, we had some late additions. 84 is, would require public entities to make a public a summary of any settlement, a legal claim involving monetary damages, equitable relief, or violation of any statute or rule. The summary would include identity of the parties, terms of the settlement agreement, any payment made by the public entity, and/or any action to be taken by the public entity. Does not prohibit a judge from sealing any part of the record of a legal proceeding other than the summary or settlement agreement. Our recommended position is to oppose. Confidentiality is a key component to reach a settlement agreement among the parties to a legal dispute. Without this component, settlement options will become less appealing to each of the parties involved in a dispute, and therefore increases the likelihood each party expends more resources with litigation.
Is this response to the Supreme Court opinion on the...
Yeah, but it actually, I think it's actually going further than the Supreme Court opinion, I believe, on the lawyer. And Kate actually wrote this up, but Kate Partell know what. Would, the Supreme Court opinion says if, if it's not, if there is no, I believe, it's as if there's no litigation, pending litigation, actual litigation, then you can't seal it. So if you do it, you know, if you get the, public entities get a letter within, I think it's six months, that say, well, we may sue, you know, and then, and then you could negotiate that, and, and now that you couldn't have a sealed agreement. And this would not, this would say, even if the lawsuit is filed, you couldn't have a sealed agreement. So it goes further than the Supreme Court opinion. My opinion, not an attorney, just a business manager. Are we okay with that position? Sorry, it was a lot for not being able to read it.
That's okay. I trust Kate's opinion.
We're on to 86. It reduces the requirement that a public body receives at least 90 percent of appraised value of real property before selling it via public auction or through a real estate broker. We would support that, though. I think that's a good idea. Good, keep going. Senate Bill 87 creates a requirement that no building, structure, park, campus, or other area may be posted as a firearm-free zone unless reasonable precautions are made to detect the presence of firearms. We recommend opposing the bill for the following reasons. Appears to be in conflict with 1327-7, which prohibits firearms on school premises without a requirement for posting or detection. The term campus, campus is used without context. It's not clear. There could be a significant financial burden on school districts having to post and install detection devices. You guys okay with that?
I am.
Senate Bill 89 adds the statement that the South Dakota Board of Education can serve, that members of the South Dakota Board of Education can serve three consecutive terms and then be reappointed after they have left the position for at least two years, a form of term limit, I guess. We, no position. I don't know if we have a strong stance on that. Any, none of those bills did that. We marked key. We had a lot of opinions, no key. Does anybody see any key bills in there? We testify, we actively testify in what on those. The amended versions, obviously, we're working to get stuff amended, but other than that, we're not considering any of these key right now.
Dr. Maher, I think, said that Department of Ed already amended maybe that one.
Did it get amended?
They were agreeable.
They were agreeable to it. They wanted us to amend it.
Amendment.
But I think they considered it friendly. So I would ask...
We were notified to be by legal counsel of the Department of Ed, the bill carried in.
That's friendly.
All right. So with that, I'd just ask the board to approve the positions, and we'll show them as board-approved then.
I'm going to move all of them, but I just want to read. I don't know if I'm going to agree or disagree on the one, just because I'd like to read the Supreme Court opinion in comparison to that one, and I don't know the number, because that was one that was on our list.
It was 84. And I don't think you had that one, so I believe that's...
Do you want us to hold that? We'll show that one as not board-approved yet, just administrative recommendation. The others will be board-approved. We can certainly do that.
Thank you.
And it was 80...
84, I think. Is that right?
Yeah, I think it's 84.
Yeah, it was 84. So we'll do that on that one.
So a motion to approve the stance that we have on these bills with the exception of SB 84. Thank you.
And then I think we have public comment.
Yep, and we have public comment. Mary?
Here I am again, Mary Shield, IC 7625, West Regina Street. Just a little latitude here. This evening, I've heard about community engagement. As we go back through some of the things that you've put out, effectively engage with families, partners, and the community, get specific feedback regarding attendance, and this is from classified staff, parents, regarding attendance, behavior, graduation rates, all those things that are part of the strategic plan. And yet SB 46 refers to restraint and seclusion, and the, I understand, I don't know where you went, Todd, there you are. Normally, you're there. I understand that, you know, the department has decided that end-of-day is a friendly amendment, but immediate, and that immediately can be ambiguous, but so can end-of-day. It's at the end of the school day, is at 11:59 PM. We want a more open and transparent relationship. We want parents more involved. I would argue that in particular, for some special needs, a parent being notified immediately might have a way to be able to intervene. And I understand that our teachers are taking training, and that's wonderful. I get that we don't have all the best parents in the world in the district, and that we deal with some things that are awful. I don't live under a rock. But I think that change... But I think that changing this from notifying immediately, if it was your child, and they didn't call you right away, would you not be upset if they said end-of-day? That's just as ambiguous as immediately. And so, I would like to ask this board to support the bill the way it was in the interest of promoting relationships and getting parents involved. Thank you.
No, that we have a second, no? Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion?
I guess in response to what Mary is asking, would it be inappropriate to say by the end of the school day? Because realistically, as a principal or as a teacher, going to go home at 6 o'clock at night and call a parent, or at 8 o'clock at night? I don't know. It's a question. Would adding by the end of the school day be a more restrictive timeframe that would be more timely? I don't know. I think when I read it, that's what I assume. I don't assume that.
I had made that assumption, too.
At bedtime or at dinnertime. I assume that when my work is done at work at 5 o'clock, I finish my things, and I leave my work there, and I complete it, and then I go home. So, when I read it, that's what it means to me. But I understand that that can mean different things to different people, so.
Yep. If I have any thoughts.
Just a little input on what the end-of-the-day looks like. And the end-of-the-day for us in the building would look like, like you said, before we go home. And that's reasonable, just knowing what's going on throughout that day. And so, by the end of the day is reasonable, knowing that the end-of-the-day could be 6 o'clock. But trying in every effort, I mean, we want to get them notified as soon as possible, and every effort is taken to get ahold of them as soon as we possibly can.
If no further discussion, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Now, go to our final report of the evening, also from Mr. Veek regarding the second quarter finance report.
Thank you again, Dr. Maher. So, we're still pretty early in the year. Revenue-wise, as you can see, we've, in the general fund, we've received 44 percent so far. Last year, it had been 41. The state aid to property tax relationship has shifted over the last two years, so that's kind of why that number's up. We are expecting, right now, we've got one big outlier left. We know we find that one out in February, that's the bank franchise tax. We're expecting to be close to right on on the revenues as far as holding off on the bank franchise, which last year was about $3 million. In the expenditures, year-to-date, so far, we've spent 41.59 through December, percent of our budget. Last year was 39 percent. You take out the federal money, and sometimes the timing on that is a little weird. Sometimes the budget, supplemental budgets haven't all come through. So, if you take out the federal money and look at the, what we call the discretionary general fund, it's 40.9 percent compared to 39.1. We're just slightly, a little ahead of schedule. Some of that gets thrown off by what we do with the, last year, we had a capital outlay reduction, and this year's the last year. We plan to do that. I mean, we transferred expenses over to the capital outlay fund. We do that at the end of the year, so that's why you have that negative number in the miscellaneous on that transfer there for FY, for FY '17. Actually, we're in FY '18, but so, I think we're pretty close to that. The one thing we do not know is the retirement incentive payments and where we're going to be on that. We'll know that in February. And this is the last year to qualify for that for teachers, so we would expect that might spike up a little bit. We don't have a pension fund anymore, so that will show up in the general fund or the special, the fund where the individuals work. Special ed, we're brought on on the revenues where we think we're going to be and where we budgeted. We're showing, tracking pretty well there. And expenses were coming in under last year's amount, so I would expect actually that we would probably come in a little under expended on the special ed fund. However, that same thing I said about the retirement incentive, could throw that off a little bit compared to last year, because we do expect a spike since it's the last year available for that. With that, not a ton of detail. We get, we go month by month with the two members of the board as we get closer to the budget period, and then the whole board as when we present the budget. So, we'll have more detail as we get closer and we get better at projecting how we're going to come in, the closer we get. So, I'd ask you to approve, well, I would ask you to approve the business manager's second quarter report.
All right. Can I get a motion and a second, please?
I'll move.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Thanks, Todd. I'm sure you make the sick person do it. All right, we're going to move on to the review revision of our school district policies. Excuse me. It looks like we've got a long list. What we've done this year is actually moved to sort of a quarterly review of our policies. And as we do with all of our policies, they come up periodically for us to review. So, we take a sort of a subset group of policies, we review them. So, you'll see many of these don't have any actual changes, but we do have a few minor changes for this grouping and the review revision. So, I'm just going to go through with them, and I'll just go through them by name. We have policy, and it's accompanying regulation, DAAR, Evaluation of Fiscal Management. We just updated language to current practice on that one. We have DFAB, Fund Balance and Carryover Funds, no changes. We have DGD, and it's accompanying regulation, credit cards, no changes. ECAB, and it's accompanying regulation, access to grounds and buildings. We updated language on our visitor check-in procedures for our electronic visitor management system. Again, minor changes, but just brought that up to current practice. We have EFD, and it's accompanying regulation, pricing and payment of food services. We updated language regarding donated funds. JRA, and it's accompanying regulation, student records. We updated language to include post-secondary technical institutes as entitles allowed to receive student information unless parent has provided an opt-out. KEC, and it's accompanying regulation, concerns and complaints about instructional materials, no changes. And KHBA, and it's accompanying regulation, commercial activities, clarified commercial activities not specifically addressed in board policies that require board authorization. So, I moved to approve the review revision of said policies. Second? Any discussion? No, thank you for doing all this. It's not the most exciting work typically, but it needs to be done, so. Yep, well, and it's, like I said, it's a continuing process. We don't just look at policies that have been brought to our attention. We continually review them for current practice and any legal changes and things like that, so, yeah, thanks. All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? All right, now, we'll move on to the first readings. We have four policies to review. The first one is AC, and it's accompanying regulation, equal opportunity and nondiscrimination. This includes the Boy Scouts of America Equal Access Act, and express commitment to ensuring the accessibility of its website content. So, this is just a, the Boy Scouts Act is a federal act, so we brought our policy up to current regulation there. We have GBEBC, Staff Gifts and Solicitations. We updated language regarding donated funds specific to crowdfunding. JJE, and it's accompanying regulation, student fundraising activities. Update language to emphasize building program administrator approval for any fundraising activity and clarify guidance on acceptable fundraisers. And we have KCD, and it's accompanying regulation, public gifts, donations to schools. Updated language regarding donated funds specific to crowdfunding. Sort of a new practice there. So, because of the changes in these policies, we believe that they should be first reading. They will require a second reading, and they'll be posted for public review on the school district's website and returned to us on February 26. So, if no objection, I'll just lump those four together and ask for a motion to approve the first reading.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion or questions? All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? All right. Anything else for the good of the order? Can I get a motion to adjourn? Okay, we adjourned. Thank you.
This meeting, yeah.